Bring this meeting to order at 6:30 PM Thursday, August 22nd. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Kozanski.
Roll call. Mr. Benomo.
Here.
Mr. Cosmo.
Here.
Mr. Fiume.
Here.
Ms. Kay.
We're calling here now.
Hello.
Hi, Marie, it's Brian. Can you hear us?
Uh, barely.
Barely? Okay. Yeah, there's nothing to turn on.
That's turned volume up.
We'll try to speak loud.
Okay, thank you.
We're continuing roll call, Ms. Kay. Mrs. Kay.
Marie, they're doing my phone.
Marie, the roll call, it's your...
Uh, here.
Okay.
Mr. Mahalik.
Here.
Mrs. Garcella.
Here.
Mr. Shemansky.
Here.
Mr. Van Hoken.
Here.
Mr. Zola.
Here.
I'd like to announce the following executive sessions that were held. One, August 1st, 2019 regarding personnel litigation. August 22nd, 2019, personnel potential litigation and tax appeals. Any public announcements or recognition?
We do have teacher recognition. Ms. Galloway, there you are. Couldn't see you.
Good evening, everybody. On behalf of the English Language Development Department and Hazelary School District, I would personally like to recognize and congratulate two English Language Development teachers for their efforts beyond the classroom. I have this honor and privilege of working with these two distinguished teachers. These individuals have been recognized by the Department of Education in the past year, 2018-19, for their parent engagement reading program, You Read, I Read, We Read. Tu lees, yo leo, nosotros leemos. Their program has been featured in the spotlight section of the PDE newsletter, Everybody's Kids News, for all Pennsylvania English language learners. I'd like everyone to please recognize Mrs. Corinne Karlik, a 5th and 6th grade ELD teacher at Hazel Elementary Middle School, and Mrs. Meredith O'Donnell, a 3rd and 4th grade ELD teacher, also at Hazel Elementary Middle School. Congratulations, ladies, and thank you for everything you do for our students and our families.
Thank you, congratulations.
The next item, I don't believe Kathy was able to make it this evening, Mrs. Basco. But just to give you an idea, I believe I may have sent it out in an email, that she was providing an award for one of the programs that she heads and is... And I forget the name of it, so I do apologize. That very prestigious award from the gifted, from our gifted, one of our gifted teachers. So she does go above and beyond. She does a fantastic job for our gifted students. So we'd just like to thank her for everything that she does as well.
Any public comment directed at the board agenda items?
Yes.
There's one.
Okay.
Lisa Bartel.
Oh, she's gonna present. She's good. She's not gonna comment. She'll be in a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the...
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeCosmo on the question. Mr. Kozanski. Meeting minutes from June 27th?
All in favor to approve the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Motion to approve the special board meeting minutes. Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mahalik on the question. Mr. Kozanski.
All in favor to approve the Treasury report, say aye.
That's the special board meeting minute.
Oh, I apologize, special board meeting. Minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Motion to approve the Treasury's report for July. Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeCosmo on the question. Mr. Kozanski.
All in favor to approve the Treasury report, say aye.
That's the special board meeting minute.
Oh, I apologize, special board meeting. Minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Motion to approve the Treasury's report for July. Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeCosmo on the question. Mr. Kozanski.
All in favor to approve the Treasury report, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Mr. Uplinger.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Bartel to present to you some information on the Stiller Foundation. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we did a fundraiser to support the program. Last year, we weren't able to accommodate the needs at that point. But however, I'd like to ask for your approval again, and should like to speak with you about it.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to thank you, Mr. Uplinger, for allowing me to come and speak with all of you. First, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Lisa Bartel. I'm a fellow educator, a mom, a wife of a 9/11 first responder, and I'm the local volunteer race director for the Stevens Hill Tunnel to Towers Foundation. Steven was a fireman on September 11th. He was off duty, he was heading home, going to go play golf with his brothers. He heard what was going on, he turned his car around, he called his wife Sally, he said, "I'm gonna go see what's going on, get back to the firehouse." He got back there, and they had already left. So he strapped 65 pounds of gear onto his back, tried to get into the city, and unfortunately, everything was closed. He ran with that 65 pounds of gear through the tunnels to ground zero, and unfortunately didn't come home that day. And his whole company didn't come home. His family decided to, we need to do something in his memory, they decided, let's do a 5K. They got Mayor Giuliani on board, they closed the Brooklyn Battery Tunnel and have closed it every year since. Our first run started with about 2,000 runners. Last year, we had about 30,000 runners. It has grown in size and depth beyond their imagination. I was born in Hazelton, my family was from Hazelton, I was raised though in New York, and I've since come back, and I'm a Weatherly resident. My daughter was Miss Greater Hazelton's outstanding teen a couple of years ago, so we have our connections to the community. As a volunteer race director, we try to raise funds for the charity events. The Stiller Foundation does great things. I don't know if anybody's ever seen them on... Frank is always, is our director, and he's always on Fox News, and he's always telling what they do. They build smart homes for our soldiers that have been severely injured, multiple limb loss, fully handicapped, accessible homes, they give to them. That they walk in the door, the keys are theirs, the furniture that's in those homes are theirs. Fallen first responder home program, if a first responder, fireman, police officer dies in the line of duty and leaves behind small children, they will pay off and have paid off. I forget what it's up to now, maybe close to 50 unfortunately, of mortgages of those first responders that they've paid off, and so that their families don't have to worry about that burden. They've also started the Gold Star Family Home Program, which is for our military families. So any military families who lose a serviceman and doing what they do every day for us, and that leaves behind a surviving spouse, young children, they also pay off the family's mortgages. I just wanted to let you guys know what you've done in the past, and how wonderful it's been for us. And so like Mr. Uplinger said, first, I'm here to hopefully have everyone be on board again, to hold another dress down day in September, to honor all that were lost on 9/11, and those that continue to serve us, and that we continue to lose unfortunately. Secondly, Stevens family has created a documentary. It's called For the Love of Our Brothers. Unfortunately, I've seen 9/11 kind of, and I don't know if it's because I grew up in New York, it's kind of forgotten in a lot of communities. The reason why we bring these runs to our communities is to bring it back, and to let, make sure that people remember what happened that day, and to honor those that are still suffering, and unfortunately, we're still losing guys every day that served at ground zero. So my hope is to bring some type of an educational program to the district in September. I actually have a first responder firefighter who lives in northern Pennsylvania who's retired, who is willing to come down and speak about his firsthand accounts of what he went through that day with the students. I'd love to show the documentary. It is an hour long, I don't know how that would work with the district, you know, if it could be worked out somehow, that would be wonderful. I'm already planning to take off a couple of days, you know, because my, the company that I work for, they know that I'm pretty active with all of this. And then lastly, my hope is that everyone here today goes home and tells somebody else. Because we have another run, we do one every year in Weatherly, this will be our fourth this year, it's coming up, and it's in April, we do it in spring, tentatively set for April 25th of 2020. We have, our most, we've had about 105 runners, so we're looking to grow. Some of the cities that have, we have 75 runs across the country. Pike County has another run, they're coming up September 8th, so if anybody's a runner and would like to go support, they're only about an hour and a half away. But some of the runs have, you know, hundreds and hundreds. So my hope is, we know we're small, Weatherly's a small town, but Hazelton's a lot bigger, and I'm gonna talk to a lot of the other counties to see if we can share and just kind of have this foundation continue to grow and do all the work that they, the great work that they do. And if anybody needs any facts on it, 93 cents of every dollar goes where it's supposed to go. Frank is their CEO, and he does not take, he's uncompensated. So it's, like, I can't, I can't speak, you know, more highly of it. So I appreciate your time, and all the effort that Hazelton has helped us with in the past. And I thank you once again.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a little clip to kind of give you that.
Just give you a little bit of background.
Since its founding, the Stevens Stiller Tunnel to Towers Foundation has committed over $100 million to supporting the military, fallen first responders, and their families. Without your support, and the support of our donors, sponsors, partners, and volunteers, we would not be able to hit this tremendous milestone. Because of you, we have been able to repay fallen first responders that risked their lives, and those who gave their lives serving our nation. Our newest program, the Gold Star Family Home Program, launched this year. We are committed to raising $250 million to provide 1,000 Gold Star families with mortgage-free homes. Thanks to you, we have delivered 10 homes within just a few months. With over 60 runs, walks, and climbs across the country, the 9/11 Never Forget Mobile Exhibit, hurricane relief, and various other initiatives, our community outreach programs have brought hope to those in need year-round.
The Tunnel to Towers Foundation, they're amazing. I can't give them enough thanks, praise, I can't give them enough everything, because I mean, they're great at bringing everyone together to make this happen.
The Tunnel to Towers Foundation has went so much further than just making a memory of a fallen hero, that now, there's so many people looking forward to great things in the future.
For me personally, and I think for our community and country in general, they just improve everything that they touch.
For just $11 per month, you can help support our continual efforts for the new year. Thank you for making this year our best yet. We're looking forward to having you with us for 2019.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have this on the agenda tonight for your approval.
Right. Mr. Uplinger?
Okay, with that, under Curriculum and Instruction, Career Center, approve items 1 through 27 with one motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Garcella on the question. Mr. Kozanski.
To approve motions 1 through 27 with one motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Just on the question, number 18 is really, it's a, it's a great museum, and I think our students are going to enjoy that, and for offering it for free to them, it's super. If you've ever been there, take your kids there, it's fantastic.
Thank you.
And if I could just, and there's so many wonderful things on this, under curriculum this month, but paying special attention to number 11, I know a lot of people were moved last year to high school. I believe for the first time, Mr. Patron presented this tremendously, so thank you, Mr. Patron and your staff.
Thank you. Yeah, there are a lot of good things on this agenda today, I agree. Mr. Uplinger?
Under Special Education, approve items 28 to 37 with one motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeCosmo on the question. Mr. Kozanski.
To approve motions 38 through 42 with one motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Just on the question, number 18 is really, it's a, it's a great museum, and I think our students are going to enjoy that, and for offering it for free to them, it's super. If you've ever been there, take your kids there, it's fantastic.
Thank you.
And if I could just, and there's so many wonderful things on this, under curriculum this month, but paying special attention to number 11, I know a lot of people were moved last year to high school. I believe for the first time, Mr. Patron presented this tremendously, so thank you, Mr. Patron and your staff.
Thank you. Yeah, there are a lot of good things on this agenda today, I agree. Mr. Uplinger?
Under Special Education, approve items 28 to 37 with one motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeCosmo on the question. Mr. Kozanski.
To approve motions 38 through 42 with one motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Just on the question, number 18 is really, it's a, it's a great museum, and I think our students are going to enjoy that, and for offering it for free to them, it's super. If you've ever been there, take your kids there, it's fantastic.
Thank you.
And if I could just, and there's so many wonderful things on this, under curriculum this month, but paying special attention to number 11, I know a lot of people were moved last year to high school. I believe for the first time, Mr. Patron presented this tremendously, so thank you, Mr. Patron and your staff.
Thank you. Yeah, there are a lot of good things on this agenda today, I agree. Mr. Uplinger?
Under Special Education, approve items 28 to 37 with one motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo. All second. On the question, Mr. Kozanski.
To approve items 28 through 37 with one motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it, motion passes.
On page 6, under English Language Development, ELD, approve items 38 through 42 with one motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeCosmo on the question. Mr. Kozanski.
To approve motions 38 through 42 with one motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Under Facilities and Capital Projects, approve items 43 to 45 with one motion.
Motion by Mr. Shemansky. Second by Mr. Benomo. Question.
Just, can I, we got a copy of number 44, Bobby? Can I get a copy of that? The quotes that were solicited for that?
Yes.
Thank you.
And did we figure out anything on the drainage system, if the volunteers in it were covered legally, everything, if there's an accident, or we talked about it in the committee meetings?
Right, we were, yeah, we're working with Mr. Schlesser's firm to confirm that before we move ahead with it. Is that on 43?
43.
43, yeah.
Is that for a liability issue of it?
Should we be voting on this?
Have you meant by that?
Just to make sure, we talked in the committee meetings that in case there is an issue, I mean, it's great, they're volunteering everything, just in case we have an issue on property.
Chris, is this still okay that we vote on it now?
Sure, yeah, we're, in the past, we've prepared releases and indemnification waiver liability agreements for volunteers, that's what he's referring to. So can we approve pending that information? Sure. Yes, sir. Do we have to change the motion?
I would.
You want to change this motion? Motion 43 through 45, 43 pending.
Add the verbiage pending. Pending the preparation and execution of the waiver agreements to be executed by your volunteers.
We have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Mahalik, second by Mr. Zola. Questions?
I have a question on number 44. Who's ahead of, Eddie? What's, what's the time period to get this lab done? I don't know, I understand that once we approve this, they're gonna get right on it, Bobby?
Mr. Carrato has met with them, and I believe that's their urgency for this evening, is to get that going. They wanted to start to do the digging. We actually gave them verbal approval, if you remember, at the committee meetings the other night, so they can start doing the digging prior to the students coming in. So Mr. Carrato's not here this evening, so I'm not sure how far they got, but I'll check on it tomorrow morning.
What are we doing with the kids that have already enrolled in the program? And it's, Ms. Herman, what are we doing with the kids that have enrolled in dent...
I have them assigned to multiple classrooms, and the instructor will go on a cart with computers and software.
So, so are we just going, if this takes two months, we're gonna do it in December, open it in December, is that correct, Eddie? Well, we're gonna open as soon as we can. I mean, I believe these guys did work for us before, and they're, I think they'll get it done relatively. Are we, are we only...
The equipment, tell me, the equipment is all purchased, and the purchase order is waiting, so that is waiting, and just once the construction is finished, we'll go right into the lab. So I'm not anticipating it to take that long.
Are these guys doing everything, or are we still going on, our guys doing the electrical... I believe our guys are doing the electrical work, they're doing everything else.
Yes. Our maintenance is doing the electrical, and the contractor will come in to do the rest.
So nobody's getting...
I think once we get everyone in the room, we'll have a better idea of when we can determine it as a, as a timely... Certainly, it's not ideal to have our instructor for this type of program on a cart, so we're certainly gonna push the contractors quickly to get, get our students in that room.
Absolutely. Mr. Kozanski.
To approve motions 43 through 45 with one motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
I'm gonna be opposed to 44 only because I agree with Tony. I think there should be some kind of timeframe and more of what's gonna happen and where, but I'm supportive of the program. I just don't like the way it's set up.
Okay, and that included the amendment on 43.
Right. Mr. Uplinger?
On page 7, approve items 46 through 47.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mahalik. Question. Mr. Kozanski.
To approve motions 46 and 47 with one vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Under Transportation, approve items 48 through 51.
Motion by Mr. Benomo, second by Mrs. Garcella on the question. Mr. Kozanski.
To approve motions 48 through 51 with one vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Under Student Activities, Athletics, and Extracurricular, approve items 52 through 57 with one motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mahalik.
On the question...
Go ahead.
I think we need to take Kelly Fadul's name off there, because didn't she rescind...
It's on the agenda, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
The items from the originals, I can look at the agenda if you think so.
Okay. Mr. Kozanski.
To approve motions 52 through 57 with one vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
On the question, Freddie, have we done anything for to recognize Rich Matts down on the building, or somehow? We voted on, we voted on that a couple of months ago to... Dedicate. Dedicate, it was supposed to be to Rich Matts Field at Harma Guy Stadium. Have anybody done any kind of signage or anything like that yet?
Not to my knowledge.
Could somebody get that going?
Yeah, we're, we're working on another signage, so, yeah, we'll take care of that.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Mr. Uplinger?
On page 8, under Finance, approve items 58 through 68 with one motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo. Second.
Second.
Mrs. DeCosmo on the question.
Mr. Fiume, before we vote, we'd like to call Brian Bradley from RBC up here. He has some good news for us on number 65.
I only wrote one page, so I promise I'll be brief.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I swear. So I'm sure as the board is aware, we priced and sold a bond issue in the public market today for the simple purpose of refinancing some existing debt, in particular, the Series 2014 debt of the school district. If you recall, I was here in January and March when we were talking about the Escrow project, just reminding of the board that we had this other refinancing coming up. In that January/March timeframe, the savings were about $200,000. And if you recall, we had talked about that June, July, August timeframe is the best in the municipal market, because there's a lot of redemptions coming in. The other thing that helped immensely, that no one could foresee, was there was a huge rally in the bond market, and as a result, those savings that we estimated at $200,000 are approximately $600,000, which we locked in today, so those are fixed and final. Your savings are approximately $600,000 from the refinancing of the 2014 bond issue. And I'll just walk through this page real quick. I boxed some numbers in green just to give you highlights. We refinanced $7,695,000 of bonds. You were paying a rate of 3.73% on those bonds with a final maturity of 3/1/2034. The new bond issue, we sold $7,535,000 of, $7,535,000 of bonds today, same final maturity, 3/1/34. We didn't extend the debt, we didn't shorten the debt, it is coterminous with your existing debt. Your new rate on those bonds is a 237. So we decreased the rate by, by one point, let's just call it 1.36%. As a result, the savings were $586,000 on a present value basis. The percentage is 7.6%. As a rule of thumb, we look for 2% to 3%, so we far exceed that. The cash savings are $590,000. It, when all is said and done, I have some miscellaneous in there for expenses, I thought that number will be more around $600,000. This is net of all costs, this is bottom line, savings to the district. As you could see, just, I boxed two other items on the cash flow savings. We front-loaded the savings in fiscal year '20 and '21, and you could see every other year thereafter in '22 through '34, it's plus or minus, it's basically rounding. And again, we didn't shorten the debt, didn't lengthen the debt, it's coterminous with the existing issue. And before I turn it over to any questions, for myself or Jens, I would be, it would be a mistake on my part not to give a hearty thanks to your solicitor and Jens. I'm not sure, I'm sure the board isn't aware, but the administration is. There was a little snafu with respect to advertisement, and it would have prohibited us from pricing the bond issue today, but your solicitor and, and your bond counsel swooped in, rectified the issue tremendously, and obviously, great results. So a huge thank you, which I'm gonna say on behalf of myself and the board and administration to both your solicitor and bond counsel, they were tremendous today.
Thank you very much.
If I could just add to that, it was not the district's problem, we didn't, didn't cause that issue.
No, not at all.
Just to be clear.
Not at all, it was no part of the working group, no part of the district, it was, these things happen, but again, that's why you have, that's why you have Chris, he swooped in, and Jens.
So how much per year is this saving us, could you say?
So if you look in fiscal year '20, the savings are $362,599. In fiscal year '21, the savings are $231,514, and then you see every year thereafter is plus or minus $5,000. Bonds are sold in $5,000 increments, so it's never gonna be...
So if we, in this upcoming year, have to do another bond issue for a building project, is now the time to do it? Will this rate be around for a long while? I know you can't answer that, I know you can't answer that, but... those savings that we estimated at $200,000 are approximately $600,000, which we locked in today. So, those are fixed and final. Your savings are approximately $600,000 from the refinancing of the 2014 bond issue. And I'll just walk through this page real quick. I boxed some numbers in green just to give you highlights. We refinanced 7,695,000 of bonds. You were paying a rate of 3.73% on those bonds with a final maturity of 3/1/2034. The new bond issue, we sold 7,535,000 of, 7,535,000 of bonds today, same final maturity, 3/1/34. We didn't extend the debt. We didn't shorten the debt. It is coterminous with your existing debt. Your new rate on those bonds is a 237. So, we decreased the rate by one point, let's just call it 1.36%. As a result, the savings were 586,000 on a present value basis. The percentage is 7.6%. As a rule of thumb, we look for 2% to 3%, so we far exceed that. The cash savings are 590,000. When all is said and done, I have some miscellaneous in there for expenses. I thought that number will be more around $600,000. This is net of all costs. This is bottom line savings to the district. As you could see, just I boxed two other items on the cash flow savings. We front-loaded the savings in fiscal year 20 and 21. And you could see every other year thereafter in '22 through '34, it's plus or minus. It's basically rounding. And again, we didn't shorten the debt, didn't lengthen the debt. It's coterminous with the existing issue. And before I turn it over to any questions for myself or Jens, I would be, it would be a mistake on my part not to give a hearty thanks to your solicitor and Jens. I'm not sure. I'm sure the board isn't aware, but the administration is. There was a little snafu with respect to advertisement, and it would have prohibited us from pricing the bond issue today. But your solicitor and your bond counsel swooped in, rectified the issue tremendously, and obviously, great results. So, a huge thank you, which I'm gonna say on behalf of myself and the board and administration to both your solicitor and bond counsel. They were tremendous today.
Thank you very much.
If I could just add to that, it was not the district's problem. We didn't cause that issue.
No, not at all.
Just to be clear.
Not at all. It was no part of the working group, no part of the district. It was, these things happen. But again, that's why you have, that's why you have Chris. He swooped in and Jens.
So, how much per year is this saving us, could you say?
So, if you look in fiscal year 20, the savings are 362,599. In fiscal year 21, the savings are 231,514. And then you see every year thereafter is plus or minus 5,000. Bonds are sold in $5,000 increments, so it's never gonna be equal.
So, if we, in this upcoming year, have to do another bond issue for a building project, is now the time to do it? Will this rate be around for a long while? I know you can't answer that. I know you can't answer that, but-
So, we are pressing on all-time historical lows, so if there are any new money projects under consideration, it's certainly worth exploring what the economics of them look like with respect to where rates are gonna go. I couldn't have told you we were gonna be, I knew the technicals were good, but I couldn't foresee, obviously, the bond rally. But it's certainly a good time, obviously, for refinancings or new money projects.
President Trump saw it. So, this 362, is that just less that we pay-
Correct.
-in our debt service, right?
Correct. So, that budget number you have in there?
So, that budget number goes back into our-
Well, the number that we had in for this 1920 year, well, that's much of the savings we'll be able to take off, basically, of what we paid. So, that savings we'll realize in this current budget we're in. Going forward, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, we could knock off our potential debt service by 231,000 next year.
Correct.
Right.
Or use that towards something else if we wanna maintain our current budget.
And then you see every year thereafter is approximately what you currently have.
Right.
You realize most of the savings in the first couple of years.
Yeah, and, you know, you could structure the savings in any fashion you want, but if you were to take them, you know, equal amounts over the whole, you're talking about $40,000 a year, it's just not worth it on your budget. So, that's why we structure them all upfront. It gives you an opportunity to fund balance or some other project that you had in mind.
Does this mean I can get my, Bobby, does this mean I can get my librarian?
Nothing else? Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Great job, great job. So, we had a motion and we had a motion and second. We already had, we were on the question. So, Mr. Krasinski?
Approve items, I apologize, sir. Approve items fifty-eight through sixty-eight with one vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm a no on H.
I'm sorry, what number, Alex?
Uh, H. Oh, we're not on that one yet.
Not there.
Sorry.
Next one.
I guess you're voting no on H.
All yeses?
Now you know.
Yes. Mr. Uplinger?
Item sixty-nine, motion to pay the bills.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Mahalik, second by Mr. Shemansky on the question. Mr. Krasinski?
Motion to pay the bills. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No on J.
I'm a, I'm a no on H and J.
No on H.
Okay, so I just have this, Mr. Van Oken, no on H. Ms. Kay, no on H and J?
Yes.
A and H, Mr. Zola?
Yeah.
I'm no on J.
And Mr. Benomo, no on J. I believe the bills still pass. Yes.
Mr. Uplinger?
On page eleven, Superintendent of Schools, approve items seventy through eighty-one with one motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo. I'll second. On the question. Mr. Krasinski?
Approve motion seventy through eighty-one with one vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Page twelve, approve items eighty-two through ninety-five with one motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mahalik on the question. Mr. Krasinski?
Approve motions eighty-two through ninety-five with one vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Mr. Uplinger?
Yes.
Are we, we take a moment to recognize any of our new hires if there?
We could do it now if you want or at the end.
We may have a couple more.
I think there's a couple more.
There's a couple more.
There's a couple more.
Let's wait till we end.
Yeah.
Zoom out one time.
Apologize.
Jumping, you and Mr. Van Hoekland like to jump the gun tonight.
You must like to play Santa Claus or something.
This is in Carbondale, Bobby. Come on.
Or wherever you're at.
Or, yeah.
Somewhere with a C.
Where Crestwood.
Page thirteen, approve items ninety-six through 109 with one motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mahalik. On the question. Mr. Krasinski?
Approve motions ninety-six through 109 with one vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Page fourteen, approve items 110 through 122 with one motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mahalik on the question. Mr. Krasinski?
Approve motions 110 through 122 with one vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Page fifteen, approve items 123 through 129 with one motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo, second by Mrs. Scarsella on the question. Mr. Krasinski?
Approve motions 123 to 129 with one vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Okay, on your addendum, under new motions, item number one, recommend board approve the resignation of, oh, I need my glasses, sorry, Kira Reyes, special education paraprofessional at HTalk, effective August 1st, 2019.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Mahalik. Question. Mr. Krasinski?
Approve motion, new motion number one with one vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Item number two, recommend board approve the resignation of Caitlin Seaman as office assistant at Freeland Elementary Middle School, effective August 22nd.
Motion by Mr. Benomo, second by Mrs. DeCosmo on the question.
Just on a question, weren't they just both hired recently?
They were.
Okay.
Mr. Krasinski?
Approve new motion number two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Kira, right? Yeah, Kira, just for Mr. Zola's and everyone else, Kira is moving to a teacher's position.
Oh, congratulations.
Excellent.
Item number three, recommend board approve the resignation of Joseph Parsons, teacher at HJCC.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Scarsella on the question.
On the question, what are we doing to replace this gentleman?
We have a plan. Mrs. Herman just jumped out of the room. We actually, we spoke about this today because it was a last-minute move or recommendation or resignation from Mr. Parsons. We have a plan to shuffle the deck a little bit and then place some people in positions that they have asked to be in and then look at a long-term sub in a position that could really use one rather than a full-time teacher at this time.
What did Mr. Parsons teach?
He was chemistry at the Career Center.
Sure we don't have a long list of those teachers?
We don't. No, we don't. Chemistry is very difficult to get a person for.
So, we had a motion and a second on the question. Mr. Krasinski?
Approve new motion number three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No, Mr. Benomo?
No.
Mr. Uplinger?
Item number four, recommend board approve the revised health assistant instructor.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeCosmo on the question.
Does it affect number five coming up here? You're hiring a health assistant instructor, but we're changing, we're revising the job description. I mean, so did the person apply under the old job description or the new?
No.
No.
No. So, what happened was the, this is typical too, Mr. Zola, that the job description, anytime it's revised, will be approved before we appoint the person to that new job description. So, this position came up due to a hiring, the Career Center, in this position. We circulate the existing job description, make any type of revisions with the director in the Career Center, as well as any specific language that we need to enter into their clearances and things of that nature. So, this is just a formality. Prove the job description, then appoint the person to the position.
So, the person that's applying here next to number five saw the new one?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, that was part of the posting.
Okay, thanks, Annie.
And just one last piece of clarification. When we post the job description, we'll put it as pending board approval on August 22nd. So, the candidates are looking at the new proposed job description.
Right.
Right. Mr. Krasinski?
Motion to approve new motion number four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Item number five, recommend board appoint Alice Nickless to the position of health-
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Scarsella on the question. Mr. Krasinski?
Approve new motion number five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Item number six, recommend board appoint Carla Bednar to the position of elementary teacher as per the HAEA agreement.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Mahalik, second by Mr. Shemansky. Question. Mr. Krasinski?
Approve new motion number six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Item number seven, recommend board approve the proposal for security cameras, CC.
Motion by Mr. Benomo, second by Mr. Mahalik. On the question. Mr. Krasinski?
Approve new motion number seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Item number eight, recommend board approve the affiliation agreement between HSD and Bluesburg.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Scars, uh, Mrs. DeCosmo. Question. Mr. Krasinski?
Approve new motion number eight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Item number nine, recommend board approve the contract.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Scarsella. On the question. Mr. Krasinski?
Approve new motion number nine. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Okay, we do have a few more agenda items that were items that were discussed earlier in executive session, and we would like to bring them to your attention now and for your approval.
Just note that after every, Mr. Uplinger will read the motion, but since it's new items, there could be public comment on each one of them.
Correct. So, we will pause for that. Item number one, recommend board approve the donation of sick days to one of our employees.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Mahalik, second by, who seconded that?
I think I did.
Mr. Shemansky. Question. Is there any public comment on this item? No questions from the board? Mr. Krasinski?
New motion number one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Item number two, recommend board approve a medical leave for the same individual, Maple Manor.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Scarsella. Question. Board, public comment. Mr. Krasinski?
Approve new motion number two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Item number three, recommend board approve to waive the 170-day requirement as stated in the provision.
Motion by Mr. Benomo, second by Mrs. DeCosmo on the question.
You gotta read the whole thing. I mean, nobody knows what's up. You know what I'm saying? We're, at least read the whole thing.
I don't think we read the whole thing on these. We have to read that whole.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, for the public comment. I'm sorry, I thought that-
I just stopped. Somebody makes a motion, I just stop. It's just-
I thought that the-
No, for public.
I thought the public had the sheet out there, but maybe you don't. They don't have a sheet. I apologize.
You don't either.
So, why don't, why don't you read that whole?
I will, I will reread. Item number two was recommend board approve a medical leave for an employee at Maple Manor Elementary Middle School, effective 8/23/2019. It's understood this leave will consist of the use of sick time. Item number three, the recommend board approve to waive the 170-day requirement as stated in the provision in item number 34, early retirement incentive of the HAEA agreement for the 2019-2020 school year for one of our employees. And we have a-
We have a motion and a second.
Question. Comment. Mr. Krasinski?
Approve new motion number three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Item number four, recommend board approve to waive the 170-day requirement as stated in the provision in item number 34, early retirement incentive of the HAEA agreement for the 2019-2020 school year for employee, and this is another employee.
Public comment. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Scarsella. I'll second. Question?
I can give you the name later. It's because of it being personnel.
Any question?
Are we opening a Pandora's box here? I mean, I didn't get this upstairs, so we are ready?
Yeah, well, I'll explain it to you afterwards.
Yeah, I think we're okay. Mr. Krasinski?
Approve new motion number four. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes.
And item number five, recommend board appoint Jeff Weed to the position of assistant principal at HAHs, effective 8/23/2019. The primary duty will be to oversee the special education student programs. This position is in accordance with the Act 93 agreement.
Public comment. We have a motion by Mr. Benomo. Second. Mrs. DeCosmo. Question?
Was this budgeted for?
It is, it is not. There's, the, at current time, we absorbed Mr. Weed's schedule in the event that we had another opening due to some movement around with other administrators. And then this was developed out of conversations we've had with high school teachers and a need for some assistance at that level. The only difference would be adding the differential onto his current salary.
Half the current.
Half, I'm sorry, half, yes.
Okay, Mr. Krasinski?
Approve new motion number five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nothing against the individual, but it wasn't budgeted for. We just went through this before we raised taxes. We weren't gonna add any positions that weren't budgeted for, but so mine will be known.
And, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time here, but I'm a no only because it isn't budgeted for.
Okay, is that it?
No, we have the, Mr. Slusser, do you have a recommended motion for those three tax appeals? I have the other ones.
Yeah, we would need a motion to approve the tax, the stipulations as presented by Attorney Wendelowski regarding the three reverse appeals for the following properties, Wyss, Sheets, and US Colt Storage.
I'll make a motion.
I will make, I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Benomo and second by Mr. Mahalik. Again, this is an addition, right?
This is an addition, yes.
So, does the public have a comment on his appeal? Any questions from the board? Mr. Krasinski?
New motion regarding tax appeals. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Recommend, there are three left. We're getting there. Recommend board approve Zorm 2009 LLC, Mira LLC, tax appeal docket number 2015-12214, Luzerne County, as per Attorney Slusser.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo, second by Mr. Mahalik. Public comment, question. Questions by the board. Mr. Krasinski?
To approve new motion for Zorm 2009. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Recommend, item number two, recommend board approve Mira 3 LLC, tax appeal docket number 2015-12215, Luzerne County, as per Attorney Slusser.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Mahalik. Public comment, question. Questions by the board. Mr. Krasinski?
Approve new motion for Mira 3 LLC. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Recommend board approve Hoyt Cinema Corporation, Hazel Township, tax appeal docket number 2015.
Brian, I'm sorry, that one is, that should not be on the agenda for action, not this evening. Thank you.
Yep, that one's off, okay.
Strike that, yes.
Anything else, Mr. Uplinger?
No, that's all I have, sir.
Anyone from the audience wish to be heard? Any public comment? Dr. Childs?
Hello, I'm Bob Childs. I live in Freeland, Hazel Valley Area School District. I want to thank the board for taking up what several members have now told me you are doing, that is, looking at a much more extensive and broad-based alternative education program. Not only will it benefit the individual students who are involved in such a program, it will benefit the classrooms. It'll make the teaching- benefit the classrooms, it'll make the teachers' jobs easier, it'll make the learning process easier for children who are able to keep up at that point in time and not disrupted by students who are not, not up to date with the subject matter being taught. I'd like to suggest to you that you consider one other thing. When the state proposed to eliminate the seven-days unexcused absences, I forgot whether it was a year ago or two years ago, I was all in favor of that because when you have students missing seven days a quarter, it disrupts the classroom learning process tremendously. They come back, they don't know where they're at, the rest of the classroom has to slow down and the whole business. This district is doing something which I think could be corrected and should be corrected, that is, they're doing an awful lot of out-of-school suspensions, and that is equally disruptive, equally counterproductive, as sick days being missed from school. When you have kids at home for two weeks at a time, and then they come back to the classroom and they're expected to participate in the classroom, doesn't work. So I'm, I'm asking you all to consider, we're, we're one of the top in the state, by the way, in out-of-school suspensions, when you take a look at it. And I'm asking you to consider, reconsider, the prospect of making an in-school-type suspension, working out a study hall-type arrangement, or whatever it takes, where students who are being excluded are still focused on schoolwork, still have schoolwork provided for them by teaching staff, and can keep up to date so they don't return to the school, you know, completely out of sync with the other students, and once again, providing a real problem for the teachers. The out-of-school suspensions, in my eyes, tend to take a problem and just complicate The, to return one other time, it may take a couple of extra seconds here, to the subject of a central junior high school. I was part of the board that went from a, from central junior high schools to a middle school, okay? The, the, the proposal was.
Fifteen seconds remaining.
The proposal was presented by the Rand Corporation, which is a think tank, and what they said was that the disruption of students going from one social environment to another was significant, that it affected your academic performance, and so going from sixth grade to seventh grade, changing schools, and then going from ninth grade to tenth grade and changing schools, again, that that was disruptive, and it would interfere with academics. Now unfortunately, that study was not done in the Hazelton area, and it's backfired on us. The, the decision we made at that time would not be made in this day and age, and the reason being basically twofold. Number one is that the data published in the newspaper less than a year ago showed that our rate of rent changes, rental property changes in this district is way at the top of the state. Okay, so people are moving from place to place to place to place to place in the district, and one of the recent surveys done by this school district indicated that one of the top concerns of the students is they can't make friends. They're, what they're doing is they're going from one school to the next school to the next school, and that doesn't work, okay? So, so it's exactly the opposite of what the Rand study suggested. The, you have that going on, and what was thought to be a good thing in terms of smaller schools having bigger opportunities in athletics, which may still be the case, has turned into a boondoggle from the academic point of view, because you have four students in a little school who are honor students in math, and you don't have the background to be able to set up a, an honest-to-guy's program. There are programs that you simply can't do. There have been proposals like taking the STEM school to a seventh-grade level. You can't do that with the little middle schools we have. It just can't happen. So you're losing at both ends. You're losing at the honor student end, and you're losing at the, at the ends where you have students who require E S L, students who require special ed, you're losing at the both ends of the spectrum with, with the current situation, and you need to reconsider that.